Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aliria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Today, "Life is what happens when you're..." or let me rephrase this, this is today's quote, "Life is what happens to you while you're busy making other plans." That's John Lennon. So, my first quote was a Republican president, and I was informed that I can't stick with all Republicans. I always try to go liberal once in awhile. So, thank you.
That's very good.
Well, Madam Clerk?
Very true.
Ian Jensen from MRGD is supposed to be here today, but I do not see her as of yet.
Wow.
Let's see, that's at 9:30.
Right.
Well, if you see her, just point it out.
10:30, there's going to be a public hearing for CDBG FY-02 Small Cities Formula Grant, and then 10:40, CDBG FY-99 Small Cities Formula Grant Amendment. Job and Family Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
There are no investments. Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
There are no advances. Requisitions?
Um...
So moved.
Um... I have exa... I'll second with an exception.
What's yours?
I'll tell you what, well, let me back up. I'm going to withdraw my second.
Well, I'll second for discussion purposes.
Thank you, thank you, because that messes everything up. Okay.
Okay.
I think you have some too, don't you?
Yeah, I had a question on 383, and that is... the spring maintenance for the refrigeration specialists. I'm wondering if there was other quotes for that.
Will you pull that requisition, Madam Clerk? I want to see the... Yes, I know what the issue is, I just wanted to see the purchase lot. Thank you, Commissioner.
It's for maintenance.
That's the one from Refrigeration Specialties?
Right.
They normally do our spring maintenance, but I can't really answer the question. I don't re... There were someone, you know, a lot of POs, so I don't remember that PO specifically. Look down in the lower right corner, is there any additional quotes?
There's three of them. Can I see them, please?
I had thought we received three quotes. I sent that PO back once, so I thought I requested three quotes on that.
Okay, and they came in the lowest. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What was it?
Um, I had an exception to 409-02 regarding the solid waste vehicle.
Want to talk about it?
Uh, it was only... Came down to 16,000 for a Taurus, I think, was it by 16...
16,063 dollars.
I think it's half, I think the car he has right now is fine.
Oh, okay, well, I wasn't sure what your objection was.
It only has 40,000, it only has, no, it just only has, he has 40,000 miles on it. I don't think we need a new car yet, so.
Well, we did have that discussion.
Right, we did.
And I wasn't su... I was subjecting to the vehicle brand, the size, and I wanted to know what's your objection, what's yours, it was a different view.
Right.
Okay. That's it?
Yep.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do you want to call a rule?
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye, with no exceptions.
With no exceptions?
No exceptions.
Mr. Moore?
Aye, with my exception.
Travel expenses?
So moved with... Okay, my, okay, I have an exception. So moved with the exception of 102. How's that?
What was it?
That's on the... Judges are sending somebody down for workman's comp. We do that here, I don't see the need for it, so that's why.
Yeah, I was going to question that, are we doing the judges, or what's happening?
Yes, Commissioner, we do all the workers' comp for the entire county.
Do we contact judge and find out why they're sending someone down?
We haven't. If there's some concern on the board, obviously, you know, I saw that also and was kind of wondering, that kind of training is normally for the people who work with the claims. The judges' personnel, they follow them to us, and we do all the required work over here. They're just their liaison. I think it was like $400 for that training, too.
264.
I'll have Mr. Foke meet with the judges' staff and find out just why they feel they need that training. Okay?
Okay, thanks.
Do you have a motion with exceptions of 102?
Do we get, who, do we second that? There's no second. I'll second.
With the exception?
With the exception of 102.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Commissioners, I would like to put this on hold and request an executive session for the express purposes of discussing potential new hires as allowed under the sunshine law.
Okay.
Approve and enter into the following subrecipient agreements for which CDBG dollars have been allocated for each project. Lorraine County Urban League, $10,600 for fair housing services in Lorraine County effective retroactive to September 1, 2001, expiring August 31, 2002. Neighborhood House Association, $43,000 for operational assistance in Lorraine County homeless shelter effective retroactive to January 1, 2002, expiring December 31, 2002. Senior Citizens Association, $15,300 for counseling services for the elderly here at Lorraine County effective retroactive to January 1, 2002, expiring December 31, 2002. And authorize present to execute on behalf of the board.
Okay, so moved.
Second. Discussion.
Yes. Ron, can you explain what this fair housing services is?
Under the Ron Twining, Community Development Director, TWING, under the CDBG grants, the federal requires, the federal government requires us to provide fair housing initiatives. It's a mandate dating back to 1976. It has traditionally been the practice of the Board of County Commissioners to get help and assistance through the Urban League. When we have a resident that feels that they have been discriminated against in their housing provision, be it a tenant or an actual private property owner, and any housing-related discrimination acts have been taken against them, they feel, that has to be thoroughly investigated. The Urban League of Lorraine County does that for several municipalities and the county. They're very equipped to take that complaint procedure, and it keeps us away, one step away from some of our regulatory requirements, and has an independent body to investigate those discrimination claims. Then they get back to us and let us know. As a part of this fee, the Urban League also has a, an attorney on retainer that is Avery Friedman out of Cleveland that is available to pursue any legal recourse on behalf of someone being discriminated against.
Ron, how does this tie in with our Fair Housing Board? Do they work together?
Yeah. If there is a pattern of abuse, then we would turn that over upon a written letter from the Urban League to our County Fair Housing Board, which is made up of three members, and then they would begin to do another level of investigation to see whether this is against a financial institution, or whether it's against, you know, a private property owner. Who is having this pattern of abuse and what can be done about it?
Okay, thanks, Ron.
Sure. Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discussion? I have none. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
I did just see Ian Jensen, but...
Oh. She was here.
Maybe she's looking for the rest of the people who are supposed to accompany her.
Okay, then we'll continue.
Authorize appointment of Helene Stone as member and Richard Knoll as alternate on the Western Reserve Area Agency, which serves a five-county area including Lorraine County. This term is effective January 1, 2002 through December 31, 2004.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorize reappearance of the following members on Lorraine County Community Corrections Board effective February 21, 2002, for a three-year term expiring February 20, 2004. Bill County Chief of Juvenile Probation, Honorable Judge George Ferguson, Marilyn Brundage, Director of CBCF, and Amy Levin, Executive Director of the Mental Health Board.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Publish notice of public hearing to be held Thursday, March 21, 2002 at 10:30 a.m. for the Carlisle Farms 1 and 2 subdivision Carlisle Township detention basin maintenance costs. Scott Dillon is a developer and has requested that detention basin and outlet pipe for this subdivision be placed on a perpetual maintenance in accordance with ORC Section 6131.63. This basin is constructed on the west side of State Route 301 and will benefit two subdivisions plus six lot splits. For Carlisle Farms number 1, east side of State Route 301 is platted plus six lot splits along Slyth Road. Carlisle Farms number 2, 21 sublots with new road to be constructed in the future on the west side of State Route 301. Each sublot benefiting from these drainage items shall be paid their proportionated share by acreage, which amounts to 5% of the total construction cost of $43,800. The 5% of $43,800 is $2,190 per year, which will be paid by all sublots. Property owners would pay 5% per year. This money would stay in the account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on February 27 and March 6, 2002, and notice will be sent to all property owners on March 11, 2002. And wait in the ladies here if you have any questions. Wait in the ladies.
Also moved.
I'll second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Advertise notice and request for proposals on behalf of Lorraine County Workforce Development Agency for the administration of the in-school Jog, Jobs for Ohio graduates model program. These proposals will be received until 3:00 p.m. on Thursday, March 14, 2002, in the facilitation of WIB Workforce Investment Board Youth Activities. These proposals will be received until 3:30 p.m. on Thursday, March 14, 2002, in the public hearing room. The notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal on February 27, March 6, 2002.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Award contract to Jean Razer Incorporated, Aliria, Ohio in the amount of $110,337, which includes alternates G1 repainting ball bathrooms and G2 adding a new acoustical tile grid and suspended system for Lorraine County Administration Building restroom facilities repair. These bids were received by RWR Architects Incorporated and recommends this approval. The bid amount is under the architect's estimate of $150,000 and was the lowest and most responsible bid received complying with specifications.
So moved.
Second. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Advertise public announcement that Lorraine County Engineers Office intends to contract for engineering services in connection with the resurfacing of various county roads. Each road to be awarded separately and for engineering services in connection with the resurfacing of Colorado Avenue. Engineering firms interested in being considered for a contract to provide the required services should reply with a statement of qualifications no later than 2:00 p.m. on Monday, April 1, 2002. This notice must appear once, 30 days prior to the due date on February 25, 2002, in the Chronicle-Telegram and Morning Journal.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve and enter into a renewal agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Katie McCartney and Associates for miscellaneous sanitary services for the year 2002 to 2003 performed on an as-needed basis.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I wonder if it's really needed. Why don't we just, as it's needed, approve it? I mean, we have a sanitary engineer, I don't understand why we have to hire someone else. Unless it's a major project or something.
I think what we're doing is locking in a, my understanding is that we're locking in a, this company just so that he can do future sanitary, sanitary work. That's my understanding is what we're voting on. And he says come through to us if he's going to spend any money, correct?
Correct.
He's still coming to us before the money is spent. It looks like, according to this agreement, the principal hourly rate is $122 an hour, project manager $94.50 an hour, professional engineering surveyor $77 an hour, and it goes down the line. The clerical is $44 an hour.
My understanding of this contract, Commissioner, is that it's the terms and conditions if he is tasked to provide work on behalf of the sanitary engineer. There's no guarantee of work, no guarantee of being authorized to do anything. These would be the terms and conditions should he be engaged to perform...
Miscellaneous sanitary engineering. Miscellaneous could be anything.
Mm-hmm.
I would like to know exactly what we're paying for, and at those hourly rates, exactly what we're paying for, and approve it at the time that the service is needed. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but that's where I stand.
I don't know, since Ken's not here, I don't know if you would like to take this. Okay, then why don't we, I have a problem, I don't have a problem holding it. If the sanitary engineer would like to explain it in better detail, I don't have a problem. Withdraw my motion.
Well, if you withdraw your second, there is no second.
Oh, I didn't make the motion?
No, I did.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my second. And if we could get maybe a better understanding of what he's looking for, Mr. Cordez?
It blew my mind, $44 an hour for a clerk? Somebody to type letters? We don't pay that to our highest-paid secretaries.
Well, I don't think we even pay that.
Be careful.
Forget it.
Some other people, too.
Maybe commissioners.
Don't want to go there.
So hold for what week?
Yeah, if we could hold that, and hopefully Mr. Cordez will have some information from the county sanitary engineer on why this is up. Okay?
Ms. Jensen is here, would you like to?
Is she ready to speak? Oh, there she, okay, I was looking in the back.
Yes, and I will begin with apologies. We have some students on a school bus coming here from Murray Ridge. Apparently, there is a bus driver living in Lorraine County who does not know where the Lorraine County Commissioners offices are.
Carrie!
If you'd like, we can wait, we have some other issues.
Well, we've put out a call to them, we only have the bus for an hour, and they're in Lorraine right now.
Well, they're getting a tour of the country.
I guess.
Well...
So, I thought we would perhaps go ahead with it, and if I might take a picture of the three commissioners with their, the proclamation, I could take that back and share it with the students. They have studied county government this last month and know that there are three commissioners, and the students know where the Commissioners offices are.
Will they still be coming to the, to the building?
We are not sure. We put a call in, and they have a system where they have walkie-talkies, and they're telling them where it's supposed to be, but we only have the bus for an hour, so they may not...
Here we are.
They're just coming in.
Okay.
Perfect timing. These are students from the senior wing at Murray Ridge School, and as you are well aware from the proclamation, they're part of the 212 students that attend our school for children with special needs.
Always certainly welcome.
We have our teacher, I'll ask her to just sort of wave to you, Renee Oppenheimer is the teacher, and there are two aides here with our students. And these students are well on their way to the training necessary to either move into the workshop for sheltered work, or out into the community in special jobs for which they have been trained. And Mrs. Oppenheimer is in charge of that curriculum.
As our understanding, they've been studying county government for...
You can talk a little bit about how laws are made and how a bill becomes a law.
She needs to come to the podium.
Yes, if you'd like to come.
Hal is waving, he's waving at you, David.
Oh, is he? I don't get too many people doing that.
See, he just ignores us all.
I didn't know I was going to be featured, okay. They've been talking a little bit about how a bill becomes a law.
Okay.
It's, it's in unlimited fashion, but it's, we've been talking about the lawmakers and how they present the bill, and the commissioners sign the bill, and it becomes a law, and they have to follow the law after that.
Okay, fantastic. Can you guys probably watch this on Government Access to see what's going on? And I'm sure now you're going to watch it.
Because you're going to be featured.
Yes.
Oh.
Well, we appreciate the traumatic trip here, since you guys were kind of getting a tour of Lorraine County at the same time. Would you like us to come down right now, or do you have any more?
If you would, and as you come down, I will remind the Commissioners that these students, when they become the right age, have the franchise, they will be voting, and they can ask for assistance at the polls, it's part of the law.
Okay, fantastic. Welcome everybody for attending.
So, may I have you join them as, in as much as some are non-ambulatory?
I'm wondering, Hal, can you get the camera on the kids, or can we get the kids over here?
If we can get everybody lined up over there, that would be good.
Okay.
Can we bring the young man who uses a wheelchair? No, he cannot be photographed, so we will not have the young man in the wheelchair, but we'll have the rest of the group. Will you come over here with Ian? This is Mrs. Blair, who's one of the Commissioners.
Welcome. What is your name?
Ron.
Nice to meet you. Don't you turn around, you're going to be on television.
Oh.
Turn around, I'll tell you. Good morning. What's your name?
What's your name?
Good morning.
It's Jenny.
Jenny?
And who are you?
Josh.
Hi, Josh. What's your name?
I'm Ronnie over there.
What's your name?
How you doing?
Yeah. Hi, what's your name? Hi.
You guys will be on TV, and we're going to study your government.
Nice and tall.
Want to talk to him?
It's a long one, though, right?
Oh, Mr. Moore? Can you look in?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. You'll be on the front page of our quarterly newspaper later. Thank you.
Nice bus ride this morning, huh? Got to see a few of the scenes anyway. I hope you pointed out things as you went along, right?
I was in the back of the bus, so we were trying to find the building as opposed to taking the tour. But we were...
Are you checking things out? That's the picture for building.
This is where all the laws are made.
This is where the Commissioners vote the money that the taxpayers give for our program. They vote that we can have it. These are the three people that do that.
So that you guys can have...
So that you can go to school. All right?
Okay, well, thank you.
So maybe you'd like to thank them.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice question.
County Administrator Jim Cordez?
Jim, do you have anything to add to this auspicious occasion?
Yes.
No, I have no further comments with the exception of reminding you that I requested an executive session for so.
Mr. Ennis, is this county prosecutor?
We just wanted to mention an issue. We had an annexation filed this week, and as the Commissioner may recall, the status of annexations is still in limbo, so we aren't exactly sure whether we process this under the new law or under the old law. Under the new law, there are four different types of annexations, and when you file it, they're supposed to direct how they want this to proceed. This was filed as if they are still going under the old law, so I've indicated to the Clerk's office that's how we will proceed with it, and we're going to set the hearings and do the notices and everything according to the old law. I just wanted the Commissioners to have a heads-up on that at such time as we get some determination as to what law is in effect that's going to have an impact when it comes up for a hearing. But I just wanted the Commissioners to be aware that we're proceeding with these new filings under the old law for the time being. I'm not sure if that's correct, nobody seems to know that, but...
Ian, do you want the decision to be made?
We originally got an indication, and we were hoping that it would be early February. That's obviously not going to happen.
So...
But...
Okay, so we're...
Well, right now, we're, for instance, if we were under the new law, we would have to be setting a hearing date today. We have to set a hearing date within five days of getting the petition.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, depending on what kind of annexation proceeding they go under, we might actually have been having the hearing right now, today, so...
Oh, really? It'd be that quick if they file that quickly? We have to have it within five days?
Well, you have to set the hearing date.
Oh, okay.
As we do right now, we wait until we get the report back from the county engineer, and then we set a date. Under the new law, we would set a date immediately, but there is also an expedited process where you would have your hearing right after the filing of the petition. So we're really kind of in limbo until we get a ruling from the court as to what law is in effect, but I just wanted the Commissioners to be aware that I've talked with the clerks, and our decision is to proceed under the old law until given a different direction.
Did they seek any way that they wanted to run it?
Well, that's what I said, they didn't file it and say, "We want you to proceed under the new law." They filed it as if they were proceeding under the old law.
Should we send them a follow-up letter saying, "This is how we're going to proceed," and then if there's any, that way it protects us, I would think, don't you think?
Okay.
And that way, there's no, "Oh, we are going under the new law," you know? Later on, they might want to do that, just to mess up...
But I don't think they can, because the new law's being challenged, isn't it?
They didn't file it and say, "We want you to proceed under the new law." They filed it as if they were proceeding under the old law.
Should we send them a follow-up letter saying this is how we're going to proceed and then if there's any, that way it protects us, I would think, don't you think?
Okay.
And that way, there's no, "Oh, we are going under the new law," you know? Later on, they might want to do that just to.
But I don't think they can because the new law is being challenged, isn't it? It's in court, so there's no.
I'm just doing a little CYA if we send out a letter saying.
Well, that's true, but I don't think, can they, they can't file under the new law because it's not effective yet, can they?
Well, the problem is, is it was supposed to go into effect and then there was a referendum filed. And what the court has to determine is whether or not there are enough valid signatures. If they determine that there were enough valid signatures, my opinion is that law should have gone in effect in December.
Right. So you'll do the letter then? I think we do that. That way the parties, and if they have to refile, they can refile and there's no liability on the county. That's all I'm worried about, so.
That's the only thing I needed to mention.
Thanks, Jerry.
Commissioners, your call?
Commissioner Vessi?
Yeah. I was in Columbus on Friday and I came back with a lot of information and I just want to share it with you. And I've talked to Ron about some of it. I've talked to Dan Bellman in regards to some issues and I'm waiting to get ahold of Dan Tellerick in regards to another issue. But Paulding County has a case of fraud regarding investments and I was really concerned when I came back home because banks, it's my understanding that banks are secured by a hundred thou, for a hundred thousand dollars from the feds, each bank. There's like 20 banks in the United States. So you get a hundred thousand dollars to each bank, there's $2 million. And I know that the county deals with a lot more than $2 million. But then I talked with Dennis Chacabozzi, who does work along with Dan Tellerick, the treasurer, and in regards to our investments. And Dennis was telling me where we have a concern is in the CDs or the checks. So I want to get ahold of Dan and find out how we are insured or how the banks are insured. It's my understanding that the banks will go up to the hundred thousand or the county goes up to the hundred thousand dollars worth of insurance from the feds. But then after that, the banks put up their collateral. And what happened in Paulding County was that the banker sold the collateral to a casino boat, but gave the county the letter that they had this collateral and that's where the fraud came in. So I'm wondering, you know, how we monitor this and how we are assured that those letters of collateral that we now have on file, what are they guaranteed by and who finds out, you know, if that collateral, if that bank really has that collateral? That was one issue. It seems like there's a lot of fraud going on in the state.
Now, that issue was a small bank, I believe, where the banker.
Sold.
Yeah, yeah, that was that. I think, I believe our banks are, we're using major banks, not smaller.
Yeah, but we still have to worry about that collateral issue.
Correct.
Well, maybe not have to worry about it, but just check into it.
Correct.
And then another thing was Perry and Licking County. They are a district in the solid waste area. I think there's four or five counties in one district and they had a problem with their, with embezzlement because what they did wasn't, we're going another direction, so I don't know where we're going to stand with this, but I think we have to cover ourselves on that, too. But what they did was they gave grants to businesses and the businesses, I don't know, I think it was just one business, that used the money for a purpose, for personal reasons, instead of using it for the business. And that's where the fraud came in, in that area. And I was thinking about our micro loans and then our solid waste resolution that we passed last week in regards to assisting private businesses and recycling businesses. And I'm thinking, who monitors these loans to make sure that that money is spent in the right way? Because I know when the county gets a grant from the feds or the state, that money's monitored, it has to be spent correctly. Are we doing this with the loans that we're making? I talked to Ron about it and I guess, Ron, maybe you would like to speak on the issue a little bit.
Thank you, commissioners. There is procedures under our CDBG guidelines for our micro loan program and we were following those same basic procedures in our proposal as we move forward with the recycling revolving loan fund. We do random, unannounced inspections or visits to businesses under the micro loan program. Melanie Long does that. We also have one other individual on staff, Brian Barker, that does cold calls randomly and he can also go out and do an inspection. We're obviously looking for the intended purpose during those visits, the intended purpose of where that money was to be used. If, as an example, they were supposed to buy certain equipment to do sewing alterations and they said that they were going to purchase four sewing machines, we make sure that there's at least four sewing machines present in the location of the business. If there are more than that, it's okay. If it's less than that, then we have the ability to come in with an independent audit at any point for just cause. We're right now getting ready to check out procedurally what advance notice must be given to the property owner if any, if we go into audit. But we do have that built into both the micro loan or AMP program and are planning to build that in as we move forward with the recycling revolving loan program.
Okay. Thank you, Ron.
Sure.
Then another issue that was brought up, because I'm on the Human Service Committee out there, too, was the misapplied payments for child support. And what happens there is the agencies, and I'm not saying that our agency is doing this, but it's happening around the United States or around the state of Ohio. The agencies receive 2% administration fees for the collection of child support. And the problem comes in is we're, that administrative, that 2% usually goes to the agency, but unless there's an arrears, then it goes to the family. And what's been happening in a lot of agencies is that the money hasn't been going to the family. That 2% has been kept in the agency instead of going back to the family. So that was another issue that was brought up. Then sales tax, the sales tax holiday. Now, that was a real fiasco out there because the commissioners decided that we're not going to take a stand because most of them felt like this issue's going to fly because it's a political issue. And what it is, is we don't know for sure if they're going to declare one day a sales tax free day or what they're going to put it on, if it's going to be one day, two days, or if it's going to be on children's clothing and if so, what happens with the seniors? Is it going to be just declared, on what day is it going to be declared? Is it going to be around Christmas time and then is it going to be for the state's portion of the sales tax or the local portion of the sales tax? Another question is, can they legally do this? Because those sales tax, a lot of them, they're voted on. How can they take the vote away from the people and declare it a holiday? So that was a lot of the issues that were brought up out there. And then I came back with Licking County's safety program and I'd like to pass this out and when Rita gets back, I'll give her a copy also. But I thought they had a very good program. And here's extra copies, anybody else would like them. And that's about all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Vessi. Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. I'd just like to update you a little on the commuter rail issue. There were a significant number of Lorraine County people who attended the Transportation Advisory Committee meeting of NOAC last Friday. And they allow public comment, so seven of those people signed in and gave public comment before the meeting actually started. And then when we came to the issue, there was some more public comment from members of the Transportation Advisory Committee themselves, including myself. And I was just very pleasing to me to see the strong support that Lorraine County had. Their State Representative Joe Cazura spoke to the group, Safety Service Director Craig Miller from the city of Lorraine, Frank DiTillio from the Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, even Bob Kish, who comes to our meetings every week. And Bob looked, he looked very impressive in his red, white and blue tie and he was the only speaker who elicited some laughter from the group. Sorry, thank you, Bob. And the, as it turned out, I suggested to the chairman of the Transportation Advisory Committee that they remove the section from the study that leaves Lorraine County out in the cold, so to speak. And after discussion, the matter was referred to NOAC's legal counsel to, in fact, determine if the Surface Transportation Board agreement speaks specifically to freight trains, does it address commuter rail or just what the issue is there. And so I'm assuming that there will be some action with the staff and some further recommendations on this issue. The next Transportation Advisory Committee meeting at NOAC is March the 15th, as I reported. On March 1st, a week from tomorrow, our 30-person commuter rail, Lorraine County Committee will get together to discuss this issue further. So I think that Lorraine County was heard and heard well and after the meeting and during the meeting, the mayor of Westlake, Dennis Clough, spoke to the issue and was very supportive of commuter rail. And David Goss, who is the representative in the Greater Cleveland Growth Association, spoke to commuter rail. He also was a member of the commuter rail advisory committee and he indicated, at least what I heard him say, was that this recommendation that was added to the feasibility study kind of after the fact was not an issue that the commuter rail advisory committee discussed at all in their committee meetings. And after the meeting, Geoga County Representative expressed support and the Dyna County person expressed support. So I think Lorraine County has a lot of support on this issue. So I'm very pleased at the way we were able to present our issue to NOAC. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's see, I'll make a statement here regarding the Lorraine County Community Development Department. The public is cordially, I can't speak today, thank you.
Cordially.
Cordially invited to the ribbon cutting ceremony and open house of the new Lorraine County Community Development Department Office Building located at 216 Third Street in downtown O'Leary. When, you might be asking, is this event happening? Well, Thursday, March 14th, 2002, the ribbon cutting ceremony will begin at approximately 10:30 a.m. after the Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, which means on March 14th, we're going, it looks like we'll be having a one-hour meeting and they already know that, so. I'm impressed. And will be followed by an open house, which will end at 2 o'clock. The Lorraine County Community Development Department offers programs and services in planning, zoning, housing and economic development. This would be a good time to come in and see the new building in which this, which is right across the street, the old Columbia Gas Building. So that will be March 14th. Put it on your calendars, put it on your planners, come one, come all.
All right.
That's the only report I have.
Good report. Old business?
None here. Mr. Moore?
I have none. I'm sorry.
New business?
Still trying to figure out how to say cordial. Well, we have something on our new business. Do you just read that or do we have to like?
Well, I would do that unless she had anything to do with it.
Unless somebody else has something, okay. Anyone else have new business?
One, accept proposals to assist the county with the construction of the Justice Center project. A, Morgan Stanley, New York, New York, to service the county's underwriter on the planned general obligation financing. B, Boris Sater Seymour MPs to service bond council and authorized financing up to 25 million. C, advertise for bids for multiple contracts and equipment requirements. These notices will be published in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal between February 2002 and September 2003 for the two phases of bidding. First phase, excuse me, first phase will include general requirements, site work, concrete, masonry, metal, wood and plastics, thermal and moisture protection, doors and windows, finished specialties, equipment, furnishing and special construction, conveying system, fire protection, plumbing, HVAC and electrical. The second phase will be the security, technology and equipment, technology and equipment, loose furnishings and equipment. These notices will be prepared and published in compliance with the ORC code.
Before you entertain a motion, it asks for a change, the 25 million up to, financing up to 25 million should be part of A, not B?
This should just stop, this should stop after bond council, period.
That's correct, sir.
And then take Ann and then put authorized financing up to that line, okay? We're going to keep it up to, correct? Because in case we don't borrow?
Correct.
That's going to be a whole other issue when it comes back to us from our council and our.
The underwriters.
And the underwriters, okay.
Correct, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to start by moving to approve item C.
Would you like to, why don't we do this? Would you prefer to vote commissioners on A, B and C separately? Is that what you're going to say?
I would, yes. And that was my subtle way of telling you that I don't want to vote separately on these issues. But I don't think there's any question about whether we're ready to advertise for bids.
But I have a list of factors that should be taken into consideration as part of the procedure for determining.
Procedure.
Procedure for determining the lowest responsible bidder and these should be given out at the pre-conference.
Is that not part of what we've already done? Mr. Cortez?
I don't think we've gone out for pre-conference for bidders.
I can't respond to that, Commissioner. I haven't seen this material, so I can't.
Well, now, my question is, I thought that we adopted some specific things with respect to the bidding process. I thought that that was.
We are using all current county commissioners' requirements for these bid packages. So if there's new material, you know.
Well, please look this over because this is a major project for the county and I think that the bidders, and we should agree on what we want them to be doing or what we expect of them. Here, Gary, got one for you, too.
You thought C was going to be easy.
Yeah, I did. I thought we were all ready to rock and roll. But I think that we should take some of this into consideration.
Since we're already on C, I guess I'll agree and I guess we can start talking about it.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Moore. Thank you for seconding my motion.
I didn't second the motion, I just.
I thought you did. I thought that's what you were saying.
You said, you asked if it was okay to talk, well, see, and nobody said yes, so then we're starting to talk.
Oh, well, so you're not seconding the motion?
No, I'm just, I'm just here, just.
Okay, well, is the motion done for a lack of second?
Well, no, no, no. What's the motion? Did you?
My motion is to approve the advertising for bids for multiple contracts and equipment requirements, including all the language that appears on the printed agenda.
Okay. Then I'll second.
Thank you.
Now, discussion regarding the procedures, I believe, I believe that the commissioners passed a resolution regarding the lowest responsible bidder. I thought we did that.
Well, that was my question previously.
Okay, so we can work on that?
I want, will somebody, I'm not sure I understand the question, so why don't we try again?
Well, let's Mary Jo to start, since she's started this mess.
Thank you.
We've adopted what I understand to be responsible bidder criteria approved by the board, I believe, about three or four weeks ago. Jerry, you want to help me with this?
Yeah, we have already adopted standards and just looking through these, I believe we've probably.
Done it already.
Incorporated at least most of these.
Well, that's what I wanted to know, whether the bidders, some of the things in here is the dollar amount of the bidder's bid, the work supplies, materials covered by the bidder's bid, whether the bidder's workforce is drawn mainly from the area residents, whether the bidder provides health care and pension benefits for all its employees, the experience of the bidder's workforce, the continue to, continuity of the bidder's workforce, whether the bidder participates in a bona fide apprenticeship program that is approved by the Ohio State Apprenticeship Council and the United States Department of Labor, the length of time that the bidder has been a participant in a bona fide apprenticeship program, the number of years the bidder has been actively engaged as a contractor in the construction industry, the bidder's familiarity and experience with constructing, the public improvement for which the bid has been submitted, the bidder's performance record as similar construction, on similar construction projects, the bidder's recent experience record in the construction industry, including original contract price for each construction job undertaken by the bidder, the amount of any change order or cost overrun on each job and the reason for the change over others' orders or cost overruns. And I can go on, the bidder's record for complying with and meeting completion deadlines on construction projects, the bidder's ability to secure and accept acceptable performance bond, whether any claims have been made against performance bond secured by the bidder on other construction projects, the bidder's compliance record with unemployment and workers' compensation laws, the bidder's compliance record with Fair Labor Standards Act, the bidder's compliance record with federal and state wage and labor hour laws, the bidder's demonstrated willingness to include and partner with minority contractors in the construction project, list of minority contractors that will participate in this project or other projects as subcontractors, joint ventures or partners, if none, they should state.
Okay.
Are these?
Those are pretty much in the agreement that was voted on, on the resolution, so I don't think it's something that's redundant, so.
I can't. Some of them are, some of them aren't.
Are there any in here that you would prefer not to have?
I didn't vote for it last time, so this is, I'm not going to support adding any more possible litigation by adding more stuff later to the process. Whether or not it will be litigated, I don't know. I just think.
I don't know if it's later because we haven't gone out to bid yet and we haven't had the pre-conference hearing for the bidders either, so I don't know if it's after the fact. George, help me out.
Well, the only, you know, we have a public hearing coming up. If, while we're having that hearing, we can run over and get the policy we adopted from Karen Davis and see if we can compare it. There are a couple of these that, from my recollection, aren't as specifically stated as they are in this list, but I think they certainly, you know, included in the overall categories we have. For instance, number 12, you have the amount of change orders and cost runs. I don't know that the policy we have adopted are that specific, but I know we do have provisions in there that delve into the bidder's recent experience with similar projects and that sort of thing. as they are in this list, but I think they certainly, you know, included in the overall categories we have. For instance, number 12, you have the amount of change orders and cost runs. I don't know that the policy we have adopted are that specific, but I know we do have provisions in there that delve into the bidder's recent experience with similar projects and that sort of thing, so. Yeah, I know, number two, the work supplies and materials, I think we have something general in there. Other than comparing item by item, I can't, I can't assure you that each and every one of those is in there, but I think most of them are at least impliedly in there.
Let's do this. There's a motion and a second. I'm not going to change my motion. Is the second going to change to add this?
Well, I made the motion.
Oh, you made it?
Yes. I wrote it about 10 minutes ago, and I twisted your arm to second it.
Well, okay.
No, I...
I'm happy with what you, well, you guys already voted on that one bidding, lowest responsible bidder. So if you want to, I mean, that's already been passed, so I don't think we need to add any more.
Well, I would like to say, too, that the responsible bidder criteria was put together by a team of people who worked on this issue, if I'm not mistaken. It included Mr. Cordez, Karen Davis, and I think Mr. Innes was involved in that. And, well, I'm appreciative of Commissioner Vacy's interest in this project, which has been longstanding. I think at this late hour to reintroduce more issues to be considered is, it's not a simple matter, and I think that we're, I believe that we're on a timeframe to get this issue ready for bid. I believe that's what, last week, the stuff was presented to us, and we were told that we were supposed to accept it and move forward today, and I believe that's what we're doing. So I'm ready to vote on the motion.
I respect your point of view, but I disagree that, that this might be too late. I don't think, I mean, we're at the point now where we're just going out for the bids. We, like I said before, we haven't had the pre-conference discussion with the bidders because usually the bidders come in before they come in for the package to bid, and this should be handed to them when they come in at that conference, or whatever procedures we determine should be handed to them at that point. To add or subtract something is just a minor little issue.
Oh, I disagree that it's a minor issue.
I've actually wanted to vote for a second. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we conduct pre-bidding, pre-pickup package conferences.
Give our new purchasing director for Lorraine County Commissioners. The way we do it is if we're, if a department is asking for a pre-bid conference, the vendors come in and pick up the bid. Bids are advertised two consecutive weeks, and if there's a pre-bid conference, what we do is we set up that pre-bid conference on that third week before we open up the bids. That way, if there's any questions from the contractors, we answer them at that time. We don't hand out any material beforehand because we don't know what the questions are going to be from those contractors.
Then maybe we have a problem, because I attended a pre-bid conference in Kiawah County, and it was in regards to a solid waste bid that was going out. They had the pre-bid conference so that every one of those bidders was handed something so that they knew exactly what was expected of them before they even picked up the specs. And I think that maybe Lorraine County should do the same thing. I think those people that are coming in to bid on issues should know exactly what we expect of them before they put all the effort into bidding on an issue.
We do do that, Commissioner.
Well, then why...
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is that because we don't know who the contractors are beforehand, we can't give out anything. Those issues that you have in front of you right there, they can be inside the bid specs. They can be placed inside the bid specs, but we wouldn't know who was picking up the bid specs until they come in and pick them up. And as they pick them up, they can be inserted already in those specs.
When we advertise, don't, don't these people let you know that they are interested?
When they come in to pick, after we advertise and it's in the newspaper, they'll come in and start picking up the bid specs. They don't call us and say, we're interested in it, or, or what's, you know, anything like that. They'll come in and pick them up, and we have a list of those people who have picked up the bid specs that are interested in that, in that job.
And then what happens after that? Do you have a pre-bid conference?
If it's determined that there's a pre-bid conference, and then it determines... It would be, say, like the Justice Center, if there's a pre-bid conference, I guess it would be the construction manager that will put it in there to say, we're having a pre-bid conference on, you know, January so-and-so, at this time, everyone's attending. At that time, if there's any questions that arise from any of the contractors, or if there's anything that we want to put in there, then it's like an addendum to those, to those specs.
All right, let me know if we're going to have a pre-bid conference. Because I definitely think a project of this size, we should have, because those bidders should be informed before they bid exactly what this county expects of them.
Okay.
Maybe I'm not speaking at the same subject, but we are having meetings with contractors or small contractors.
We are having, we have set meetings to have discussions with local contracting slash vendor firms to get them interested in the process of bidding on the Justice Center. That is, where to pick up materials, how to make a bid package, what's required in a bid package, such as bonding and so forth, to reach out to the community, and to reach out to our merchants here that may require some assistance. Again, we adopted responsible bidder procedures a couple of weeks ago, and those are incorporated into the, I sent them over to CM, they are in the bid packages, it has been incorporated into the bid packages, what the board passed, or I should say, a majority of the board passed a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Vacy. So we did make sure they got in the bid packages. That material that you did about three weeks ago, it is in the bid packages, and it covers a great deal of this, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to refresh my memory then, and show me a copy of it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ivan.
Is there further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Ms. Vacy?
Hi.
That was easy for Commissioner Blair.
Do you want to do the 10:30 public hearings?
Now, let's get done with this. Let's do the easy one. I want to try an easy one. You said the last one was easy, let me try an easy one.
Oh, no.
You don't want to try an easy one?
It's not going to be easy.
What's the 10:30 hearing?
It is the CDBG FY 2002 Small Cities Formula Grant.
Brian?
This morning, we are conducting the first public hearing for the CDBG application for 2002. As you remember, it's, the project year is assigned to the year of the application. These funds, I'm going to ask Assistant Director Kelly Glenn to do the first public hearing this morning, and in a minute, she will explain that these funds typically are not spent until 2003, but there's a two-step process she will explain, so I will turn it over to Kelly. I will circulate handouts to the audience and do the sign-in sheet that is necessary for this first public hearing. Thank you.
Good morning, Kelly.
Kelly Glenn, Assistant Director of Lorraine County Community Development. I'm here to do the fiscal 2002 CDBG public hearing. If I start talking too fast, can you give me a signal, because sometimes I don't realize I'm doing that. The purpose of this hearing is to provide information.
I apologize on behalf of our county. If you wish to have me, have him removed from the room, just say so.
Can you do that now?
Mr. Cordez, it's going to be nice. Thank you, continue, Kelly.
Okay. The purpose of this hearing is to provide information on the State of Ohio 2002 Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as CDBG, which specifies what the state's general objectives are, what programs that have been developed through the community development block grant objectives, and how the anticipated federal allocation of the state of Ohio will be divided and/or budgeted. In addition, this first public hearing is our opportunity to hear from persons, organizations, and officials throughout the county, and what needs exist in our communities that can be resolved through CDBG funding. Overview of CDBG. CDBG came out of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended in 1992. HUD entitlement and state's small city CDBG allocations to state. The Act established three national objectives to be met. Benefit low and moderate income persons and households, aid in the elimination of slum and blight, and meet an urgent community development need. The Act also established eligible community development activities which can be funded with CDBG dollars, which include activities designed to create jobs for low to moderate income persons, provisions of housing, such as improvement of housing stock, public facilities improvements, and other fair housing-related issues. The third is activities designed to remove the architectural barriers, and fourth is public service activities. These activities can be undertaken as long as they meet one of the three national objectives that I mentioned earlier. Fiscal 2002 Consolidated Plan Program Summary provides a synopsis of the State Department of Development's funding plan. The four categories include housing, shelter, and program support, two community development programs, three economic development programs, four general administration. Lorraine County has traditionally participated in four programs. Our participation thus far has been CHIP, Community Housing Improvement Program, Formula Grant Program, which is CDBG, economic development, and general administration. And just to give you more information on that, housing, shelter, and support program known as CHIP. CHIP program deadline for this year is April 9, 2002. Lorraine County has done their CHIS update last year. You have to do that every three years, and we are currently administering our CHIP program that was funded in 2002. It was a $500,000 grant. The Formula Grant, Lorraine County is classified as an acquired county. An acquired county means that the population of the county is less than 200,000 residents. That's subtracted from the city's population. Entitlement cities are communities with a population greater than 50,000. In Lorraine County, we have two acquired cities, O'Leary with 55,953 persons, and the city of Lorraine with 68,652 persons. In addition, cities that receive a 2002 allocation amount greater than 50,000 will be expected to administer their own formula grant under the State of Ohio Departments of Development. North Ridgeville is currently the only city that meets that criteria. Lorraine County's total population is 284,664 persons. After entitlement cities, population has been subtracted, the county's population is 160,059. Therefore, we are classified as an acquired county. Once the county's population reaches 200,000 after subtracting the entitlement cities, Lorraine County will be an entitlement county. It is anticipated that this will be 20 years down the road from now. Under, okay, wait a minute, I lost my place. Okay, within the next 30 days, we expect to receive our Formula Grant allocation notice. Lorraine County should be allowed at anywhere between $410,000 to $420,000 due to the 3% budget cut that the state received from the federal government. We plan to conduct the required second public hearing for formula grants in mid-June. Applications for CDBG fiscal 2002 will be available starting today, and we'll be sending out notices to the, to the communities starting Friday, March 1st, and they are due back Friday, May 24th. That's the last Friday before Memorial Day. Economic development programs. Funds are used primarily for job creation, business retention or attraction. Lorraine County has utilized economic development funds to establish our county revolving loan fund, as well as to provide infrastructure improvements, such as the installation or extension of public water and sewer facilities. Funds have been used to assist the acquisition of buildings and equipment. Funds are available for creation of the microenterprise businesses. And last but not least, administration. CDBG funds can be used to operate fair housing, general administration, and planning efforts. 15% of the county's allocation can be used for these administrative costs. An example would be if we were to receive $410,000, 15% of that would be $61,550 for administration. And in conclusion, we have not received our consolidated plan. Usually, we have received it by now, but we haven't received it. That should be available in March, and if anyone has any questions regarding our consolidated plan, you can contact our office. Are there any questions? There's no questions, that will conclude the public hearing for fiscal 2000 CDBG.
Good job, Kelly. Thank you.
Well, I guess I should introduce Mr. Twining, because he's in five minutes for the amendment for fiscal 99.
Wow. That's a tough room you're working in there, Ryan. Do we, well, do we have to do anything with this one, or is it's?
Do we need...
Do we need to adjourn, or?
Make a motion or anything to conclude the hearing?
We should ask for public comment. You've declared this closed, so if there's any comments or questions, we would entertain those, either Kelly or I at this point.
Any public comment regarding Kelly's presentation?
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin, I just like to ask a question. Under administration on the second part page, when the CDBG funds are used to operate fair housing, general administration, and planning efforts, I'd like to know how much is actually used for the fair housing part?
Go ahead.
And how that is used?
We talked earlier in the meeting, if you remember, Commissioner Vacy asked a question about the Fair Housing Board and requirements and complaint procedure. Again, this is what we typically outsource to the Lorraine County Urban League on a complaint procedure. Fair housing is mandatory as a part of that. We have gone as high since 1995 to $13,000. I think this year that we're presently operating on, we're under contract for roughly $10,000 to administer. It fluctuates based on the activity from the previous year, is how we assess that. As far as the 15% for planning, we typically, we're going to have $5,000 in this year, this year's expenditure for CDBG, which was a 2001 application. That will go for the New Horizon Housing Impediment Study. We paid $10,000 for planning when we did the farmland report, but those are the only two times since the 90s that I'm aware of that we've spent any planning money, even though it's an eligible activity. Typically, our admin, we set aside 15%. That pays for everything from the required legal ads, our copying, salary reimbursement, and we usually stay between that. We've been as low as 8%, but we usually hover for our admin of all the CDBG programs in that 12% range. We have often used the last 2% or 3% of our admin allocation to cover cost overruns and a few things like that. But Shirley, does that answer your question? This year, the fair housing allocation was, we think, $10,000. We can get you that exactly downstairs. Percentage-wise, it was $437,000 was the total allocation in 2001.
I don't want to prolong, this is Shirley R. Johnson again. I don't want to prolong the discussion of this, but since Oberlin and some of us have had a long-term interest in fair housing and had the, one of the first fair housing ordinances in the country, I just am, continue to be concerned about this area, and I guess it would be interesting sometime to have a report from the Nat, from the Urban League about how many complaints they take care of anymore. I hope that perhaps we don't hear about it because we don't have so many anymore, but it would be a good thing to know sometime.
And if I may respond to that, I certainly appreciate those comments. I would be honest and say that we hope this next year to receive funding from the state in one re... And one reason we're holding this public hearing earlier than normal, normally we do this in March, we're holding it at the end of February this year because we are applying for New Horizon funds to do a housing impediment. That housing impediment study, we have worked with communities throughout Lorraine County for the last two and a half years gathering information in preparation of this study. That kind of data and information will be included in that housing impediment study. One concern that we have is we will get the numbers from the Urban League, but that may or may not be a true reflection of the concerns our citizens in Lorraine County have in terms of fair housing. They may not be aware who to make fair housing complaint procedures to or complaints to. So we want to step up that effort. We're also doing that with our own county fair housing board. So I appreciate your comment, and we're trying to get better at taking care of people that feel they have been discriminated against in the housing market. Are there other comments or questions?
Bob, you can come up.
I see Bob's dressed for the holiday.
Bob, Kishileria. I noticed something the other day since I took a couple unusual routes home. When you're coming from Midway Mall, you're headed south on West River. Almost everybody turns left or right and doesn't go down West River, down Furnace Street, and into O'Leary. Many, many moons ago, Lorraine lit Broadway all the way from City Hall, down Broadway, down 28th Street, which was poorly lit at the time, all the way to Grove, the city limits. I think it would be very nice if they could brighten and lighten the area down West River, Furnace Street, and into O'Leary, and I think there's some housing there that may or may not be able to be addressed in this. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
That is a wonderful idea. However, if you remember, we have entitlement cities and acquired cities, and we have no jurisdiction on that effort inside the city of O'Leary and Lorraine. So we will forward those comments to those two cities.
Thank you. Any other public comment? So do we make a motion to adjourn the public hearing then?
I'll move.
No, 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 Bob.
No, 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 no. I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Blair.
Hi.
Ms. Vacy.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Right. We're now here for the 10:40 hearing. Ron, or Kelly?
We would ask the commissioners, allow us to conduct a second public hearing for the fiscal year 1999 CDBG allocation. Ms. Glenn is handing out information, and I can see on the very first line, I have a typo and on the heading, this is for fiscal year 1999, not 2001 as it indicates here. This is a two-step process. You just heard for the application year 2002, the necessary first public hearing that gives you a general overview of the type of programs that Department of HUD typically funds throughout the United States. The second part of the public hearing process is project-specific, activity-specific. Today, I want to talk to the public about an amendment to the formula application, one of those four areas that are funded. In 1999, the state of Ohio and the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, approved a grant for Lorraine County. It had several activities, according to the application that was submitted, that were funded. We received notice of that funding in September. The grant has been entered into. We have certain amendments that we can do in-house. We are permitted to make adjustments administratively at the local level without state approval, provided they do not exceed 10% of any one activity in the CDBG or do not exceed $5,000. Both are critical here. If it exceeds 10% of the total grant or $5,000 in numerical value, then we do have to hold a second public hearing, submit that request for amendment to the state for their consideration. Today, that's exactly what we're going to do. If you skip to the middle of the page just prior to the indentation, we have a situation that we want to let the commissioners and the public know. Ever since we have tried to operate this program, probably in February of the year 2000, we have been taking applications on behalf of the city of Avon Lake for what's called a home repair project where we can authorize up to $5,000 per resident for emergency health and safety needs in a residential setting. Despite several attempts, both on behalf of the city and on behalf of the county, we have to date only had three applications from Avon Lake for assistance. Two of those were deemed income-eligible and received the total $7,035 towards repairs on a health and safety issue in the city of Avon Lake. Within the last 30 days, we received notice from Avon Lake that they have a $14,165 balance that will remain unspent, and they have directed that the county can either redirect those funds or return those to the state of Ohio. Under the present grant agreement, it exceeds our ability to amend anything locally, and presently, those funds would have to be returned to the state of Ohio. We have, as Kelly explained, a requirement that we cannot have more than six county projects. In that year, we did in fact have six county projects. We are concerned with this $13,165 in returning it to the state of Ohio. We'd like to keep it here in Lorraine County. The only possibility of doing that is to seek an amendment with the state that will take $13,500 from the Avon Lake unspent balance and ask that it be applied to the local contribution for a removal of architectural barrier project in Huntington Township. Again, this is because of the stipulation, we cannot create a new project, a seventh project. It's just not permitted. Huntington Township did have a sizable local contribution, $30,000. It went in towards this removal of architectural barrier project, and we are asking permission from the state of Ohio to reimburse the township $13,500 of that $30,000. By phone, we have been given the indication that they would be happy to consider that. They've agreed with us that that's likely the only place that we could attempt to keep that here locally. So we've gone through the notification process with the papers and are here before the commissioners seeking that adjustment. We are also asking at the same time, and this is more of a procedural request than anything else, during the Grafton Township project, they did have a cost overrun on an architectural barrier project of $2,900, which we authorized through a change order in the commissioners', and we've taken that funds out of the county's general administration, which leads to my answer to Ms. Johnson's question on the percentage of allocation. We could do that because it was less than 10% of the total allocation and less than $5,000. Since we're seeking an amendment anyways for 99, we are just cleaning up our records and saying to the state, let's go ahead and officially have that modified to the grant agreement. This grant is scheduled to be completed by April 1, 2002. We are in fact requesting these changes at the military time 23:30 hours. I did that for Mr. Cordez.
Yeah, but the rest of us probably know what time it is.
That's 11:30 at night.
Thank you.
We're doing that at the last minute because we have tried repeatedly to get people that need assistance in Avon Lake, the assistance they need, and this is our last gasp to try and keep as much of the CDBG funds here in Lorraine County as possible. So at this point, we are willing to answer any questions first that the commissioners may have, and then that the audience may have, and then we would ask that you close the public hearing and direct us to make this application to the state or this amendment to the state of Ohio if that's your decision.
Ron, you said that this was fiscal year 1999.
That's correct.
Okay, but then you mentioned that this project wouldn't be completed until 2002.
Right.
Why such a gap in life of time?
And that's confusing for a lot of folks, and at times, it's confusing for Kelly and I. Right now, at any point in time, the fewest number CDBG formula programs that we are operating at any one given time, each being approximately $420,000 to $470,000 in size, are at least three activities and sometimes four, depending on the time of the year. They give us 18 months from the date that they approve the grant to complete the work. Typically, it's June of next year. We have certain procedures for the release of funds and environmental reviews that we must go through, so there's really about six months' time lost at the beginning. That gives us 12 months to get any of the architectural drawings necessary, the bidding procedures, contracts. It's quite often granted a one-time or twice extension of about six months. In 99, we were finishing up 96, 97, 98, and 99 at the same time. We had two really large projects that year, and we did seek amendments, partly because we weren't getting activity from Avon Lake as well. So we have granted two or three extensions for this project. I think it was the third extension, and that extension will expire on April of 2002.
So every time you have to extend a project, you have to get okay by instead?
Anytime we extend a project, we're not going to complete and utilize the funding within the time allotted by the grant agreement. We come before the commissioners and ask for an extension. We are now on track to do what the state average is, one extension. That's all we've sought in 2000, and we may have good luck in 2001 and not even have to acquire a first extension. But yeah, 99 should be, we hope, the last where we have more than one extension.
And that has to be approved by the state also?
That has to be approved by the state. They have been. Technically, if we wanted, we could seek an extension rather than an amendment here. We've been advised by the state that they're not going to consider, they'd like to close out their 99 year, so our best option is what we're recommending here.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ron from the commissioners? Any public comment regarding the amendment?
Commissioner, I'd like to add one thing. Ron and his staff has done a great job of making sure the dollars stay here in Lorraine County, very aggressively pursuing options to keep the dollars here. Obviously, a lot of people say they're supposed to do that. Well, they're supposed to do a lot of things, but they do keep a very sharp eye on making sure the resources are exploited to their maximum for the benefit of our citizenry here, and I'd like to commend him and his staff for doing that.
A couple weeks ago, you called me Friday night regarding an issue. Is this similar? Is this the type of money it would be used for?
Yeah.
I wasn't aware you're only allowed to use six in one year, six people you're allowed to assist.
No, 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 it's not six people, it's six activities. We call a project.
Yeah, what's the definition of an activity?
An activity is what you and I would call a project or a program. Activities typically would be an elevator in Huntington Township, which is a removal of architectural barrier. It can be the homeless shelter, it can be the senior citizens, it definitely is the sewer projects, but we are only allowed what the state calls six activities countywide. Emergency home repair would be one of those items. We typically go for money there.
I'm just trying to toot your horn. Ron received a phone call from a senior citizen who was, I don't think she was a shut-in, but she's, you know, didn't have much.
Close.
Yeah, and her sewage was backing up, and her basement was flowing, and made it a health issue. Ron was working late and calling about 6:30 at night on a Friday trying to assist this lady, and then by, I believe, what, Sunday, she contacted, everything was getting better, but you're now assisting her to hopefully get some funds from the county to clean up the mess. So these are the type of activities that?
Not to clean up the mess, but to replace the ladder going to the sewer line.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Ron wasn't out there in his waders, but, no, but he did a great job, I mean, of representing this county. I commend you and your staff. Thank you.
We would request that if it's the wish of the commissioners to submit this amendment, that you authorize that submittal. We will make that this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this public hearing be closed and that the Board of Commissioners authorize the amendment as outlined by the Community Development Department.
Do we have to include to make application?
No.
Okay. Second. On both.
Is there discussion on the resolution?
Do you need the president to sign that? Okay.
Yes.
She said, he said no. Does it say president on there?
It does say president on here.
Can you change that to any one of the three commissioners? Just in case, if you, this is last minute, you don't catch, catch me, that's what I'm afraid of.
As long as we get a copy of the resolution, I can send the letter down. If there's going to be a difficult time lag in getting a copy of the resolution this afternoon, then we bring a letter up for the president to execute. We wasn't sure which you'd want, so you can do it either way.
As long as we don't slow it down, so, thank you. Call the row.
Ms. Blair.
Hi.
Ms. Vacy.
Hi.
Mr. Moore.
Hi. Thank you. Thanks, Kelly. Good job.
Ask him to record on that transit.
Ron, since you're here, before you cut out again, there was Commissioner Vacy had an issue regarding the transit. Did you want to give us an update on that?
I'll start, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Glenn because she's the one that pursued that. The issue has come up, other counties are using and able to use CDBG funds which originate with the federal government, passed through the state of Ohio. On our particular case, because of the size that Lorraine County is, I would point out that we are the third-largest county receiving state allocations under the CDBG, so this is not a small project or undertaking. There are only two counties that receive more funding for CDBG formula allocation than Lorraine County does. It is an eligible activity under a public service. It's one of those six projects that I talked about, or six activities. We also have, as Kelly will explain in a second, a limitation of 15% maximum that can be spent in a year for public service. Typically, we have asked in the past quite often for waivers from the state of Ohio on public service allocation of 15% because right now, we fund neighborhood house and senior citizens for counseling. Those are two. If we go to transit, it is eligible, but we would have to make adjustments or ask for a waiver with the state of Ohio in terms of adding a third activity for public service in the name of county transit. Kelly, would you like to fill in any of the additional information the state gave you?
The only other thing that I would add to that is, we can have three activities, but one of those public service activities is going to have to be cut. Their funding's going to be cut. Because typically, the state, once you ask for a waiver, they don't give you more than 20%. And they told me there's no guarantee that they would fund all three of those activities. Meaning, senior citizens, neighborhood house, and then if we add transit to it.
They wouldn't fund all three?
Uh-uh.
What about the six? Where's six projects come in?
Because you're going, because the county, we're only allotted to do six activities, programs, whichever you want to call it. You're saying that transit is going to be one of that sixth. So somebody's going to have to be cut.
Okay, what are the six that we now have? The seniors?
Every year, that change is based on the applications that we give. I won't be able to give you all of them in this particular year, but typically, what we end up with, we have countywide about $240,000 to $260,000 allocated for the six countywide activities. Out of that, we have one activity that goes to the neighborhood house historically for providing shelter for homeless or displaced individuals. We have senior citizens providing counseling and assistance to low-income and elderly folks. Those are two. Those are two. You could add a third, but it likely will not be approved by the state of Ohio, is what Kelly's telling you. If you want to go transit, you probably would be, we will be advised, that if you want transit funded, you're going to have to decide either neighborhood house or senior citizens will likely need to be eliminated, and that funding would go towards the transit. Neighborhood house, in this year's application, the one that we are presently submitted last July, is receiving $43,000, and the senior citizens, I believe, was 15,100. The other four remaining activities are where we get into retrofitting community buildings with elevators or handicap ramps. We can do emergency home repairs for people needing sewer taps, like we did in Sheffield Township that one year, when the county put a sewer line in and we needed to give assistance to homeowners that couldn't afford to pay both the lateral and the connection, or the assessment and the connection. We have done, Kelly helped me with some of the other projects, we have, removal of architectural barriers is a big one. We put handicapped equipment in playgrounds, in parks with this funds.
Let me ask you, the question is, you guys are talking about six programs that you say if we initiate three, and if we add that one as a third, we're going to lose two, and that's where the confusion's coming, I think.
One of.
I understand that. We're going to lose one.
Why?
We can...
I mean, you're talking about six or three? That's aren't your guess?
And that's...
You're talking about six overall.
Six, six, okay, let me, let me just get down to the brass tacks here.
Give me right down to the bottom line.
What the problem is, the federal government in its regulations have said there are certain activities we need to make sure are provided for, but they do not want HUD dollars to fund each and every social program that's out there. There are other sources of funding that could be used for this. We have to decide locally. The general rule has been that we only have two public service activities per county, and those two should not exceed 15%. They cannot exceed 15% unless there's a waiver issued. The state has also said that they will not. They'll entertain 100% of our allocation going towards public service, but they typically don't grant waivers beyond the 20%. What we're suggesting to you today is that if you say three of the six programs are public service, and we're supposed to fit that within the $420,000 that we estimate we're going to get next year, the state of Ohio is going to come back and say, we will fund this activity for public service, this activity for public service, the request, and I'll pick a number, $20,000 that you had for the third public service request, we are denying and we are reducing your $420,000 allocation by that 20,000, and you are now going to get $400,000. We're trying to avoid that. Our best counsel to you is, while you can submit three public services, it won't be approved.
Okay, I heard you talk about 240,000 to 260,000, and then 420,000. Clarify that for me.
Okay, and I appreciate you asking that question, because I'm sure that is confusing to people. We have the 420,000 that we're likely going to get, but we also have total. That's earmarked for Lorraine County. We also have five acquired cities that Kelly talked about. They are Oberlin, Avon, Avon Lake, Amherst, and Sheffield Lake. Those have dollars within that 420,000 that are earmarked for those cities that we must administer for them, and that typically goes in that 250,000 to $200,000 range. So when I talk about the 260,000 that's left for the remainder of the county, we take the allocation that is earmarked for the five acquired cities from that 420,000. This is one of those times I need to chalkboard and it will make more sense.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
But then, if CDBG money, county CDBG money, could be used for transportation as a public service, so could the municipality, the two cities then, right? And this, what I'm getting at is, when I heard this conversation, or when we had this conversation in Columbus, the county that's doing this has a partnership, you know, with the hospitals and everybody, and the cities. So those cities could pitch in for the transit. But they're CDBG money too, can't they?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. The way I would answer that question is, each city, and this is going to get even more confusing, this is Kelly and my life down there, each city cannot have more than three activities. Each city also cannot have more than one public service activity within those three. Avon Lake typically spends and has two activities that they provide funding out of their $31,000, one public service and then one other type projects. They're out, they're permitted to have up to three, but they typically go with two. The public service that they go with is roughly $12,000 to $13,000 for a hot meals program for shut-ins over the weekend. That's a public service. You're going to have the possibility of asking Avon Lake and those five communities to provide a portion of their allocation for transit, and they may consider it, but you would honestly, just as the county would look at those three public services being narrowed to two, you would have, in that case, Avon Lake, that would have to choose likely between either the meals program or transit with their portion of their allocation in order to be in compliance with the public service part. If they have no public service, Avon, Oberlin typically don't have public service projects. Oberlin has acquired property to put in low-income or affordable housing, and that's been very successful. They could take a portion of theirs, do another acquisition for affordable housing, and take a portion for a transit subsidy for the operation, but, you know, it gets a little complicated between that last Friday in May, when we get all of the requests for funding, which greatly exceed the allocation that we have, and the first week in July, when we make the submittal to the state for funding. It can be done, but it's not going to be easy to fund transit under the CDBG without having a major shakeup and adjustment, and I think in fairness, you need to let those public service providers know that you're exploring your option. We'd be happy to, to hold those meetings or host those meetings if that's the commissioners' desire.
Well, I first would like to take a survey of exactly what projects they are funding, and how much, I mean, like Meals on Wheels, how many meals are going out?
We have that report as a part of their submittal for repayment. We can get that gathered up and, say, a three-year history and supply that to commissioners.
If we could take a survey on just exactly where we're spending this money and how it benefits the public, and if there's any leftover at the end of the years, for example, you know, maybe they return so much money, and maybe we can reallocate that money to the transit.
We can, as long as it doesn't exceed the 15%, even at the local level, on public service.
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate, is maybe to show what we've done the last three years, get something to the three commissioners so we can review it, and then I think we need to discuss this some more. I think that would be more appropriate.
Okay.
Whether or not to do surveys, or let's see what the history is first, and then I think we might have to revisit this issue.
Kelly would be happy to do that.
I can tell that. Anything to get her from coming up and talking, so. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks. So we go back to number G.
Let's go back to new business. I'm going to try to, want to try it again, see if this one's easy? You said, since yours was supposed to be easy. Nothing's going to be easy, man. Okay, why don't we, I'll make a motion. We'll go back to A. Do you want to read A? And could you read it properly with the...
Morgan Stanley, New York, New York, to service accounts, counties underwriter on the plan, general obligation financing and authorized financing up to 25 million.
Period. There's nothing else we should add to that, Mr. Cordez?
I believe that leaves the window open for further discussion on the mix of financing.
Okay. I'll make a mo, I'll so move. How's that?
I'll second for discussion purposes.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I thought we were going to discuss it.
Yeah, I have the information from the company, and it looked good. I think we had three quotes on that, and they were the lowest quote, so that was impressive. Compared to Season Good, I believe, they were like $40,000 less.
What information are you looking at in the past?
I had some information in regards to the quotes from the different companies. There was three different companies. I don't know if I brought it out here, sorry if I didn't.
I have my three, we did receive three quotes. Jim knows the name of the companies. What was the other one, from Columbus?
Season Good was one of them. I think they were at 144,000, they're pretty close, and then there was another one, and this one.
What was the one?
Prior.
Prior securities.
This is, okay, that's good.
Oh, here.
And the most important thing is on this, is that we're not agreeing to finance the 25, we're agreeing to go up to, so we can get proper counsel on what would be appropriate for this county, correct?
There'll be a mix of financing and recommendations, that's correct, Commissioner.
This is just step one.
But John did give us some information too in the report that he had given us. To tell you the truth, I haven't had a chance to really digest it yet. If I promise you I've been willing to vote on this next week, can we hold it?
I think we need to take action today.
Yeah. I read John's report, and I gave him all the information, and he didn't mention the other two companies, he just mentioned one. It looked like an opinion letter, so I was all disappointed in his report.
Well, I asked John if we had to really move on this today, and he said no, another week wouldn't hurt, because by the time you go out for the bids, it's going to take time, and he, he felt comfortable with waiting another week.
The only problem is, I don't know if I'm going to be here next week. I'll be flying in from somewhere late Wednesday and taking off Thursday, so I don't know I should be here. I'm planning two trips around this meeting for next Thursday, but I might not be here, so, that's what I'm concerned with. I just didn't want to tell you guys that.
Why not? You were going to leave us hanging high here.
Leave you hanging. Yeah.
Well, I'd just like to speak to this issue about Morgan Stanley briefly, and the rationale that was presented to us, one thing that was of interest to me was that Morgan Stanley has identified a refinancing opportunity on a portion of the county's Series 1996 general obligation bonds that could allow the county to achieve present value debt service savings of over 175,000 as part of the planned new issue. And I just think that that's in addition to whatever else we're talking about, and I think it sounds like a plus for this company, and Mr. Cordez and I had the opportunity to speak to the representative last evening, and he expounded on that, and so I was impressed with that aspect of it.
Any more discussion?
I'll take a pro call. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Spacy?
Aye.
B, Morris, Sater, Seymour, and Peace to service bond counsel.
I just, before you vote or make a motion, I'm going to put my plug in again. The last time we chose this law firm to represent the county on the court authority issue, I voted no, and I'm, if that motion comes forward, I'm going to vote no again. I think that Squires, Sanders, and Dempsey has done a good job for the county in the past. Clearly, they are not the only law firm, and I respect that, but they have quite a history with the county's bond rating. They went with us when we went to New York to upgrade our bond rating the first time, and they have represented the county for over 15 years, and in the Investment Advisory Committee meeting that was held a week ago Monday, I believe, there was significant discussion between Dennis Chakobozie from United American Capital Corporation, who advises the treasurer by contract with the commissioners on investment issues, and clearly Dennis has to be involved in this issue, and I just, I felt the conversation lended itself to working with Squires, Sanders, and Dempsey, so I'm telling you ahead of time how I'm going to vote.
We haven't even made a motion yet.
I'm just telling, in case you wonder.
I'll make a motion. How's that? We'll see. I'll move. See if we can get a second. How's that? You might be off the hook, see?
That'll be interesting.
I'll second it. I did look into that. Dick Desmond was the person from Squires, Sanders, and Dempsey that dealt with the county for many, many years until he retired, and I think they, they have a new team of people, younger people, which is great, but I think we're just, they're not any more experienced than this firm is, so we're going to have to...
And we're actually just spreading.
And this firm is less expensive, and we're spreading it, I mean, after 30 years.
I'm not sure that they're less expensive. How did you determine that they were less expensive?
I think I saw some figures. That's why I asked to have a week on this, but since I can't have the week, but I thought I saw some figures that showed that they were, their hourly rates were less.
Well, I haven't been privy to any of those figures that you're speaking about with respect to the underwriter or the legal counsel.
Well, you just spoke for the underwriter.
But you referred to some figures that you had, and you quoted a dollar amount when you spoke about Morgan Stanley. I did not have access to that information. I don't know what you're speaking about.
Well, I'll give you a copy of it.
Any more discussion regarding the law firm, or did you want to see the information?
No, I told you I'm going to vote. Don't confuse me with the facts when I've already made up my mind.
Guess it doesn't matter, since you already voted on it, then okay.
Well, I haven't, but I told you what I was going to do upfront, so you'll know.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Spacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Spacy?
Aye.
Public comments.
Any public comment?
I'd like to leave in two.
I can leave too, we got to do this.
Well, come on.
Are you leaving today? Bob, are you leaving today? Are you leaving today? Oh, okay. I just thought that's what you're dressed for.
Robert Kishileri, Ohio.
Three minutes.
Good morning, especially to they not present. Sorry about the grammar, but we have to distribute, distinguish between they and them. You, in TV land, are they. Remember, they not present are always wrong. Fellow who said this died in 1754, way before TV. Good news. Congratulations on cutting costs. I notice the commissioners are cutting costs and/or downsizing by not including a cover sheet on the faxes regarding the commissioners' meetings. We mushrooms appreciate it. Don't let the sun shine in. Only officials are to be notified. It is written, "Many are stubborn in pursuit of the path they have chosen, few in pursuit of the goal." No acka. How prophetic that the very first two letters are no. A committee is a cul-de-sac down which ideas like rail transit are lured and then strangled, you know, cosinched. After this school bus incident, with the students getting lost and not knowing where this building was, I have even more of a feeling that that justice center is being built in the wrong spot. It should be built north of the railroad tracks somehow, and it should be centrally located. Downtown Elyria and downtown Lorraine are now located at Midway Mall. If you refuse to believe it, well, you can continue to revive the area, but we're not going to go back there. The best thing we can do is that lighting project to tie Elyria into Midway Mall. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. It's like the Peanuts football cartoon. We, Lorraine County, gets to work on the railroad, but after being cosinched, you can't ride, drive, or ring the bell. Now that it's jumped the track, we get a taste of hell. Fish die belly upward and rise to the surface. It is their way of falling. That guy died in '51. Hopefully, a great flame follows a little spark. I was so glad to see the students here, that I got to speak with the teacher and advise them tapes are available from the commissioner's office of the commissioners' meetings, and she appreciated it. So I did get to do my good deed for the day.
Thank you.
Dictionary alert, a science note, the Doper effect, the tendency of stupid ideas to seem smarter when they come at you rapidly. I regret that I have but one commitment, to visit the 50th state, to observe for the next two weeks, to observe various forms of public transit. next two weeks, to observe various forms of public transit. Aloha, you all.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks for the warning. You won't be here for two weeks, too. Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session.
So move.
Purposes is outlined by the administrator and Mr. Ennis.
Could we add a litigation issue to that executive session?
And a litigation.